With a mission to deliver fiscally responsible, highly dependable services to the citizens of our community and the region. With integrity and professionalism, this is the City of Albany Commission Meeting with Mayor Bo Duro, John Howard, Ward 1, Mayor Pro Tem Matt Fuller, Ward 2, BJ Fletcher, Ward 3, Chad Warbington, Ward 4, Bob Langstaff, Ward 5, Demetrius Young, Ward 6, with interim City Manager Stephen Carter, City Clerk Sonia Tolbert, and City Attorney Nathan Davis. This is the City of Albany Commission Meeting.
Good evening. Welcome to the October 2021 Work Session, a regular meeting of the Albany City Commission. We are fortunate tonight to have Pastor Patrick Sebastian of Sherwood Baptist Church with us to give our invocation. Welcome, Reverend Sebastian, and would you approach the voting, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, hallowed be your name in this time, Lord. I pray, Lord, that you would bless this time. May it be your time. Father, I thank you for each one of our leaders, Lord. They have a difficult task each and every day, and so I lift up each one of them and their families, those around them. I pray that you bless them. Father, that you would continue to fill them with strength and wisdom and your guidance, your direction for our city, Father. Father, I also pray, Lord, that you would continue to heal our city, Lord, for so many families who have lost loved ones for various causes, whether illness or natural causes or whatnot. Father, I pray, Lord, that you would continue to heal our area. You would use and allow our leaders to be able to heal the families in this area as well, Lord. And I pray for our future endeavors as a city, Lord, that we would continue to see our best days ahead to the glory of God. Lord, we pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Chris Howard, would you leave us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. The minutes have been circulated. I assume all members of the commission have had an opportunity to review the minutes as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for roll, Ms. Tolbert.
Mayor, we didn't do the roll call voting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll start by calling the roll.
Okay. Ward 1?
Here.
Ward 2?
Here.
Ward 3?
Here.
Ward 4?
Ward 4 is here.
Ward 5?
Here.
Ward 6?
Here.
Mayor.
Mayor is here.
Okay, for the minutes, Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yeah.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Mayor.
Mayor votes yes. The, we have three applications for alcohol licenses. The first, the applicant is S.A.I. Sony One Inc., seeking a beer and wine package license at 2121 Radium Springs Road. Good evening, Mr. Norman.
Yes, Sony Sony One Inc., doing business as Albany Mart at 2121 Radium Springs Road, has submitted an application for packaged beer and wine. The applicant is Solene Pethwa, and the local agent is Donna Moore. The type of business is a convenience store. The planning department identified this location zoned in C1 on an interior street and in Ward 6. The distance requirement has been met from schools and churches. This establishment has been vacant for a period of time. The applicant submitted a draft of the renovations. The renovations I am planning, in the process of putting new lighting in the store, repairing damaged roof, installing new gas pumps on the premises, painting the inside and out, installing new shelves along the fixed, along with fixtures and the windows. I have ordered parts to repair the coolers. We have already cleaned the lawn, shrubs, and premises. Our intentions, if the repairs go as planned, trying to open by December the 1st. The applicant placed an article in the Albany Herald at least 10 days prior to this meeting as notification to the general public that the application would be considered for approval. The applicant and the location meet the criteria for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Any questions, Mr. Howard?
No question.
Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Mr. Warbington?
No questions.
Commissioner Langstaff?
No question.
Commissioner Young?
Yes, sir. This is a location that is located right across the street from New Birth Fellowship Church. It's right at the, a little bit away from the entrance of the Garden Hill subdivision. I've talked to a number of neighbors, as well as the church pastor, and you all should have received a list of emails that, from the church members who do not want this convenience store open near their church. The, you know, as far as the upgrades to the store that the owner is intending to make, it would not make a real difference. I think she's probably limited by the flood regulations in terms of how much she can do to that particular location. Repairing the roof and putting in a few shelves and lighting is not going to be enough to make that a quality or a high-quality convenience store. We see all over town a business model where owners come in to some, you know, poor location in an area by a very low-cost structure and make minimalist improvements to it, and then go into the business of selling alcohol, selling Lotto tickets, putting in gambling machines, and that's a detriment to the community, to the surrounding area. And that's why I'll be hoping that we deny this application for this gas station. The improvements, again, cannot be made to make this a high-quality location. That whole corridor on Radium Springs, the church has put major money into improving it. It looks nice as residents are driving home. You know, there are a number of other businesses located, as well as some homes in that area, and we already have alcohol outlets in that area. Actually, we have six on that whole stretch of Radium Springs from Holly Drive all the way back to Oglethorpe. So we don't need any more alcohol licenses to be put into that location. I know the business model is, if you have a convenience store, you can sell alcohol. You want to sell alcohol, but we just simply do not need any more alcohol licenses in that area. It's going to create a problem for the neighborhood. It's going to bring, bring the quality of the neighborhood down from the simple fact that she cannot make the right type of upgrades to make it a quality location. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I think Commissioner Young got ahead of us. I was going to call, go around the table for discussion.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't know if Commissioner Young was forming that in form of a question, but I'd like for staff to respond to his statement about the renovations can't be done. I don't know if that's Mr. Forghey or engineering, or if that's...
Well, I asked that question the last time we had that in the work session, and I think I want to say, Mr. Forghey, at that particular time, if you want to speak to again, that's fine, but I think he did acknowledge the fact that will be limitations on how much of a renovation she could do because of the flood requirements.
Good evening. Yes, sir. This is in the floodplain, so it's limited, but if they spend more than 50% of the value of the building, they have to meet floodplain regulations. So they could spend as much as they want, but they'd have to meet floodplain regulations. In order to do it without meeting floodplain regulations, they have to spend approximately $40,000 or less. So they have $40,000 to work with, and if they go over that, they'll have to meet the floodplain regulations. So depending on what they do, they may or may not have enough, plenty to do it.
Well, if you, and I think you all provided some pictures from the church members to turn that into a location that looks, I guess, similar to one of the Brad Lanier stores or some type, even the store that's down on the corner, which is a circle, I think it's a Circle K, right at the corner of Radium Springs and Oak Ridge, she would have to make, you know, some serious substantial improvements. And I don't know, did you say she had already put in gas pumps, or she's planning to put in gas pumps?
That's her intentions.
With $40,000? And see, that's what we don't know. If we approve her liquor licenses, there's plenty of actual stores that are in operation right now. If you go through, they don't have pumps working. They have, you know, all of the little gloves that fit on the, on the gas cans that are not working, and all they're doing is selling alcohol, selling cigarettes, selling Lotto tickets. You go to every, just about every low-quality gas station on the south side, you will see that, you know, gas pumps aren't in operation. So it's a certain type of business model that they're putting in these particular locations that do not serve... It's those type of locations that do not serve the community's best interests, and if she, you know, we had some type of guarantee that she could make those upgrades, then there might be a different story, but I just don't think so. The pastor mentioned to me that there, when it was open the first time, it was one of those types of stores, and they had some problems. I think there was a shooting in the store, maybe about 10 years ago. I think it's beyond your ability to go back, but, you know, we don't need that in that particular area.
Okay. All right. Questions?
Yeah. Mr. Forghey, if you know, if I get Mr. Forghey...
Sure, sure. Let's ask questions now, and we'll go around for discussion, but...
So, Mr. Forghey, the question would be, to bring this property up to flood standard, if you go past the 40,000, what's required just for our edification? What will be required to bring that up to flood certification?
For commercial buildings, they need to be floodproof, one foot above flood level. I do not know how far that is up on the building. You know, for argument's sake, let's say flood level is two feet up on the building, so it'd have to be floodproof to three feet. And floodproof means treated in some fashion like Sunny's was recently to keep floodwaters from getting inside the building, so it could be blocked up around the building, and then floodgates would have to be put in any openings, doors, or they'd have to be available. So if a flood's coming, the floodgates can be put in to keep water from coming in. So it's not like elevating a building, but it is still a substantial expense.
Okay, so for the city to approve a construction permit or any kind of work to begin on the property, they would need to have an estimate?
They'd need to have...
To show they're going to be under 50% or over 50%?
Yes.
If it's over 50%, then it would go into another criteria that y'all would manage to say, what are you going to do to bring it up to flood standard?
That's correct. We would not issue a permit if the work was going to be over 50% of the value.
Okay. And to date, that you know of, there hasn't been a permit requested or...
No permits yet. Except for, there has been a temporary electrical permit. Other than that, no construction permit.
Yeah, I was about to ask you. I was out there today, and I saw that there is a construction meter that's been set, so I was thinking they might have already pulled a permit, but they haven't...
They have just for that, though.
Right. Okay.
Yes. Mr. Norman, what is the distance from 2121 Radium Springs Road to New Birth?
It's over 1,100 feet.
Okay. And that's, we measure that from the sanctuary, though, not the church's property line, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So do we know what the distance is? You don't know the distance from this location to the church property line?
No, sir, but by this being 1,100 feet?
That's a long one.
It's going to meet the criteria, because they only require to have 300 feet.
Yes. Okay. All right, any discussion? Commissioner Howard?
No discussion.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Nothing further.
Ms. Fletcher?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Warbington?
Nothing further.
Ms. Langstaff?
Nothing further.
Ms. Young?
Nothing further.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the application.
Mayor, I would move to deny this application.
Motion to deny the application. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion of second. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table this permit in light of all the new information that's been shared tonight. I think Commissioner Young had asked for what Mr. Norman brought to us, but that's the first time I'd heard their plans for renovation. And then in light of what Mr. Forghey has shared, you know, in terms of flood, estimates, cost, you know, when you look at the building as it sits, it's a detriment to the community. It's a detriment to the neighborhood. It looks horrible. It's blighted. And if the applicant can add some details to what he or she's going to do to the building and answer this cold floodplain question, you know, it might change the perspective of what level of a construction are they going to bring. But this is very new information, very fresh. If I'd even had this information yesterday, I could have done some research. You know, I work in the construction world, so I could have taken what was just shared tonight and even dug into it a little further. So I just think in light of that, I want to make a motion to table it, to try to get some more information of what was shared tonight.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion. Okay. Is there any discussion on the substitute motion?
Yes, sir.
It comes now first before the initial motion. Thank you.
Okay, so procedurally, we have a motion to deny and a second, and a substitute motion and a second to table this application. And what we do now is have discussion on the substitute motion. Commissioner Howard?
No discussion.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No discussion.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Well, is the applicant here where they could share? The applicant is here, where you could answer these questions, because this also is things I'm hearing for the first time, and, you know, I do know that area, and I know the church, and I know, you know, that's a tremendous part of that neighborhood is New Birth. So would you care if she steps up to the podium and lets hear exactly what your renovations are, and would you do that, please? Yeah, I'd like to hear that. Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd also add, if we're going to hear from the owner, there are some representatives of New Birth Church here, and we also hear from them as well.
Well, we're not going to hear from anybody else, but hold on. In fairness, I mean, we're not going to hear from the general public, so...
Well, and I don't know if we, to hear from her, I just went, I mean, it was just new news. I didn't know any, I didn't know this, so, you know, if it's...
Another applicant had asked me about speaking tonight, and I said it wouldn't be...
Okay, well, then, I mean, I will...
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, Commissioner Fletcher, any discussion?
Nothing else.
Richard Warbington?
No, I guess in terms of my table, Mr. Davis, am I supposed to time-bound it, table it for 60 days, maximum of 60 days?
It doesn't have to be...
Yeah, so I would time-bound my table motion for 60 days and give staff and the applicant, if they want to come, whatever work session next month, which would allow the applicant to speak and anybody else to speak in a work session with the new information that's been shared.
Okay.
That's it.
Commissioner Langstaff?
Nothing further.
Okay. Commissioner Young?
All right, nothing further.
My concern about the table is, if the applicant says these renovations will be made and the renovations aren't made, then we're going to have egg on our face. I understand this building is in very poor shape, and I don't want to be in a position where we consider the application predicated upon the representation that the renovations will be made and then renovations are not made consistent with what our understanding or expectation of those would be. But be that as it may, we will call now the question on the motion to table for not more than 60 days. Is that correct, Commissioner Warbington?
Chris Howard?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Warbington?
Yes.
Commissioner Langstaff?
Yeah.
Commissioner Young?
No.
Mayor votes no. It passes. Okay. Next on the agenda is an application from One Life Liquor for a liquor, beer, and wine full-package store at 1515 Clark Avenue.
One Life Liquor Incorporated, doing business as One Life Liquor at 1515 Clark Avenue, has submitted an application for packaged liquor, beer, and wine. The applicant is Jayman Patel. This type of business is a package store. The planning department identified this location zoned in C2 on an interior street and in Ward 2. The distance requirement from schools and churches have been met. This establishment is currently operating as Milan Food Mart since 2002. The applicant submitted a draft plan for the renovations. The applicant intends on painting the outside of the building green and white, redesigning the parking lots, planting trees and shrubs around the building. He's planning on in the interior to remove the kitchen equipment and the gaming machines, increasing storage inside of the building, renovating the restrooms, replacing the cooler and the heating units with updated ones, improving the security of the doors, camera systems, POS systems, and improving safety protocols. He's, his intention is to design the interior to match with green and orange and add small trees and plants throughout the establishment, in addition to add speakers. The applicant placed an article in the Albany Herald at least 10 days prior to this meeting as a notification to the general public that the application will be considered for approval. The applicant and the location meet the criteria for approval.
Any questions, Mr. Norman?
Mayor, point of order. I'd like to go and make a motion to deny and call all the questions, and my motion to deny is based on the assurable standards that Mr. Davis has provided for us, that at the discretion of the city commissioners, myself making the motion based on the general character of the neighborhood and the reason of negative effect on the surrounding properties and neighborhoods, so I make a motion to reject this permit.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? Commissioner Howard?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
No discussion, but after the vote, as I stated earlier, would you allocate me a few minutes to talk about it?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem? Any discussion?
No discussion. No discussion.
Ms. Fletcher?
No discussion.
Ms. Warbington?
No discussion.
Ms. Langstaff?
No discussion.
Commissioner Young?
No discussion.
Okay. Can we call the vote? Ms. Tolbert?
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
No.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Mayor?
No.
So the application is denied. I assume if the applicant seeks a hearing, a hearing will be scheduled. Is that correct, Ms. Davis?
Yes, sir. Under our ordinance and state law, our office will provide a concise statement of denial, and they can reply within so many days, ask for a hearing, and then I'll get with y'all on this later.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Norman.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes. Ms. Howard?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, point of order?
Yes.
Is this a new agenda item?
No, it's not. I'll be there.
This item is done and voted and we're ready to move on?
I did tell Commissioner Howard I'd let him speak, so if we could, I understand proper time would probably be under other items.
I really just think it puts the city at risk to further elaborate on a decision that we made that was a very clear majority of the commission. I think the hearing that Mr. Davis just said we're about to have was going to be scheduled would be a time to have further discussion, but for us to talk about the vote we just had, it's going to put the city at risk, in my opinion, so I think that's not appropriate, and it should be considered a new agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, you have the prerogative to let me speak or not speak, and...
Well, I told you, you can speak. Ms. Howard, I think it probably better...
But let me clarify. I agree with the commissioner from the fourth ward that what he alluded to early is to go forward with it, and he was quick to call for the vote, but after what I did here from the city attorney, which is in our code, that the city attorney provided for me yesterday, and that he would notify, since it was voted to be denied, that he would notify the applicant that within five days that he can appeal the decision, and then we have 10 days to, he has 10 days to respond, and then within 30 days, that we do have those 30 days to make comments and to call individuals from certain other areas. And so since I know that this is going to be appeal, I do believe in following Robert rules or always the protocol, that what we say tonight, and then when we have the appeal process, I will agree that that would be where I would flush out my concerns, my issues, and things of that nature. And so looking at, again, what the city attorney provided yesterday, I will yield my comments until we get to the appeal process, but it will not change my vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I also make a point of order?
Yes, sir.
I would appreciate if we could kind of follow our standard procedure, because I think before Mr. Warbington made his motion, that the standard procedure was after Mr. Norman spoke, that we all got a chance to either ask questions or to speak and then make our motion. I don't think it does any of us any, you know, justice to kind of overlap that procedure that we've been following, you know, up until this point. We, you know, I don't know what the objective was, maybe other than to, you know, maybe not have Mr. Howard making whatever comments he wanted to make, but I think we just need to keep our procedure standard and not try to kind of move around that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One question, since we have voted on it, and it is... One question, since we have voted on it and it is, and it would be in the hands of the city attorney to provide each and every one of us with a copy of the charter. Let me ask the city attorney one question.
Okay.
Nathan, by the vote that was taken tonight was a five, a five-two decision and in this city ordinance, which is section six dash one oh nine, when it states that it would just only be four individuals from the commission that will participate in the process, right?
Well, it's just a polite reminder that any official action requires a quorum. That's the reason it's in there.
Okay. Now, I make another question. By the vote taken tonight, is it possible that when we make the decision, can a person go back and rescind, hit the vote, or what?
Well, it wouldn't be rescinding. They, now, there'll be a full-blown hearing with testimony from witnesses, documents, you know, the things y'all have been discussing for a long time about density and other issues will all be, you know, fleshed out and discussed and then there'll be a vote, yeah.
Okay, and if another, if it's taken, that's when individuals from the general public can be called in as a witness of that nature, right?
Yes, I anticipated in presenting the case for the denial that I will ask certain individuals to testify, yes.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Howard, people would be called to testify by the city attorney as opposed to, you know, you understand the difference?
Absolutely. It won't be a person that's come from Timbuktu.
Yeah, right, right.
Right.
Marshal Norman, the next item is an application from Greg Ventures LLC for a beer license at 2401 MLK Junior Drive. I think it's a transfer. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Greg Ventures LLC doing business as R&amp;M Number Two at 2401 MLK Junior Drive has submitted an application for a transfer of an alcohol license application for beer only. The applicant is Gregory Dexter Daniels. The type of business is a convenience store. The planning department identified this location is owned in C1 on the Collector Street and in Ward 6. The distance requirement from schools and churches is not required on a transfer. This establishment, it was previously licensed as Davis Grocery from 2010 to 2012, and it's been R&amp;M Grocery Number Two since 2012 until to date. This applicant placed an article in the Albany Herald at least ten days prior to this meeting as notification to the general public that the application would be considered for approval. The applicant and location meets the criteria for approval.
Any questions from Marshal Norman? Commissioner Howard?
No question.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Mr. Fletcher?
No questions.
Commissioner Warburton?
No questions.
Commissioner Langstaff?
No question.
Commissioner Young?
Uh, yes, sir. Just as a point of information for the public, this is the old Bunny Mac convenience store that's historically been right there at that corner in South Albany on the corner of MLK and John and Williams Road. Let me ask a question. Is Mr., I forgot, I missed his last name, Greg, is he a resident of Albany?
Mr. Daniels, yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Daniels is a resident of Albany.
Yes, sir.
So, this is being a transfer of ownership to an actual resident who lives here in Albany. And it's the same convenience store that's been there for years. I just wanted to let the public know that. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the application.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Commissioner Howard?
No discussion.
Mayor Protem?
No discussion.
Mr. Fletcher?
No discussion.
Mr. Warburton?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Langstaff?
No discussion.
Commissioner Young?
No discussion.
Could we call the roll, Ms. Talbot?
What, one?
No.
What, two?
Yes.
What, three?
Yes.
What, four?
Yes.
What, five?
Yeah.
What, six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor votes yes. Thank you, Marshal.
Yes, sir.
The next item, we have two items actually tonight about altering meetings. This is to amend Article Two of Charter, Section Two of the Charter, to provide for a regular meeting to be moved from December 28, 2021 to December 21, 2020. December is a month that we only have one work session and the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for clarification, could we pause for about a minute that individuals that can make an exit from, since we are getting to regulations, if they want to stay, they can stay, but if some want to leave, they can just, you know, leave, which we have quite a few senior citizens that want to get home before they get done.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Howard, any discussion on this item? Mayor Protem?
No discussion.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No discussion.
Mr. Warburton?
No discussion.
Commissioner Langstaff?
No discussion.
Commissioner Young?
No discussion.
Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to amend the Article Two of Charter Two of the Code of Ordinances to provide for the regular meeting to be moved from December 28, 2021 to December 21, 2021.
I offer the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent to dispense with this second reading and ask for its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Howard?
No further discussion.
Mayor Protem?
No discussion.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No discussion.
Commissioner Warburton?
No discussion.
Commissioner Langstaff?
No discussion.
Commissioner Young?
No discussion.
Could we call for a vote, Ms. Talbot?
What, one?
Yes.
What, two?
Yes.
What, three?
Yes.
What, four?
Yes.
What, five?
Yes.
What, six?
I'm sorry, yes.
Mayor?
Mayor votes yes. The next item on the agenda is a proposal to amend the zoning ordinance of the city, so to change the status of the property located at 1,004 Newton Road from R3 to C5.
Mayor, I'd like to offer the ordinance for the zoning case, ask for unanimous consent to dispense with the second reading and ask for its adoption.
Second?
Motion is second. Any discussion? Commissioner Howard?
No further discussion.
Mayor Protem?
No discussion.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No discussion.
Mr. Warburton?
No discussion.
Commissioner Langstaff?
No discussion.
Commissioner Young?
No discussion.
Sorry about that, Mr. Forrie. No problem. Can we call the vote, Ms. Talbot?
What, one?
Yes.
What, two?
Yes.
What, three?
Yes.
What, four?
Yes.
What, five?
Yeah.
What, six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor votes yes. The, we move now to resolutions is, oh, Ms. Fields, I thought the chief had this. Good evening, Ms. Fields. This is a conditional item, seeking authorization for submission of an application to the governor's office of planning and budget for the public safety officials and first responder supplemental grant and to accept the grant if awarded.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I offer one through thirteen after we announce what each one of them, I offer the resolution and ask for its adoption, one through thirteen?
Could we take this conditional item and then-
Yes, sir.
Do that, because it's-
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay. Tell us about it, Ms. Field.
You basically stated the whole thing. The governor is offering a grant to provide a thousand dollar supplement to full-time employees of the city serving in eligible law enforcement and first responder positions or a three hundred dollar supplement for active volunteer firefighters. We have looked at our staff. There's approximately three hundred employees that will get this benefit and we recommend approval to apply.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Field? Commissioner Howard?
No discussion.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No questions.
Mr. Warburton?
No questions.
Commissioner Langstaff?
No question.
Commissioner Young?
No questions.
Ms. Field, just, I mean, police officers are getting, and EMTs are getting a thousand dollars and firefighters are getting three hundred, is that right?
Volunteer firefighter.
Fire volunteer. It's a supplement for active volunteer. Okay, okay, I got it. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Chair would entertain a motion to-
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner wants to offer the resolution?
I want to ask Ms. Field about a question before we vote on number nine.
Okay. Oh, number nine. Okay, let's vote on this first. Can we do that?
Oh, we do? Okay.
No, I was, I want to take this separately-
Okay.
Than the others, okay?
Let's go, let's move.
All right. Was there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Howard?
No further discussion.
Mayor Protem?
No discussion.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No discussion.
Mr. Warburton?
No discussion.
Commissioner Langstaff?
No discussion.
Commissioner Young?
No discussion.
Can we call the roll, Ms. Talbot?
What, one?
Yes.
What, two?
Yes.
What, three?
Yes.
What, four?
Yes. Did we offer the, did somebody make a motion in the second?
It was not.
I don't think we made a motion.
No, you're right.
So-
Do you have a motion?
We don't.
I'd like to make a motion to offer the resolution for the law enforcement first responder grant and ask for its adoption.
Second?
What, one?
Yes.
What, two?
Yes.
What, three?
Yes.
What, four?
Yes.
What, five?
Yeah.
What, six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor votes yes. Now-
Well, Mayor, I'll offer the resolution and ask for its adoption, one through thirteen, and leave nine out so we can discuss it.
We just voted on one.
Yeah.
So, two through thirteen.
I didn't say that?
No.
Okay.
Is, um, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, and that would be to offer the resolution and ask for its adoption, items two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is second. Any discussion on any of these items? Commissioner Howard?
No discussion.
Mayor Protem?
No discussion.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No discussion.
Mr. Warburton?
No discussion.
Commissioner Langstaff?
No discussion.
Mr. Young?
No discussion.
Could we call the question?
What, one?
Yes.
What, two?
Yes.
What, three?
Yes.
What, four?
Yes.
What, five?
Yeah.
What, six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor votes yes. The next item, item number nine. Ms. Fields, are you gonna stay with us on this?
Yes, Commissioner Howard has a question.
Is Mr. Hodges, Mr. Daniel, anyone here? Mr. Stock's gonna sit in for us. Good evening, Mr. Hodges. Okay. Stock going up? Can you tell us about this? Just briefly?
Yes, sir. So, this was the request for the contractor for what we were referring to as the Sandy Bottom Circuit, and we're here for any further questions.
Okay. Commissioner Howard?
Mr. Mayor, the reason why I asked, I had a brief conversation with Mr. Vitt between AM and PM this afternoon, and you did say that the owner of A West was going to, would you care? Have you heard in the back from it or what?
I have not heard. What we're talking about is the owner of A West has spoken with minority contractor to, and they are in discussion about subcontracting some of the, some of the work, but it's gonna be on a case-by-case basis. It's not the boring part, because that's not what this subcontractor does.
Right.
It's the, if you tear up the street, then somebody's gotta put the asphalt back. If there's things like traffic control, all of those kinds of things are the items that they're speaking about subcontracting with the minority contractor with. And they, they are, they are so ready to do it. They were trying to get a contract signed that day, but, because I have spoken with the minority contractor. So, they are ready to do this. It, like I said, it will be a case-by-case basis. As, as things come up, that's the contractor they're going to use, and that contractor has agreed to hire other minority contractors to fulfill the work. So, there will be minority contractors on this job.
Okay. So, what you're saying, because this is the first time I think I've ever seen one that is going to see four hundred and fifty-something days, so he, so as there are certain projects that come up, that they will, you know, sub out to minority contractor, right?
That's correct. And as it was explained to me, there are, they have to locate some utilities and they, at this moment, they're not sure if those, if they're in, if the lines are in the street or they on the side, and if they have work that they have to do covering up, then that's what they would hire the minority sub to do.
Okay. Is there a check and balance we would know, or just once this eight million dollars go, we just, just would take, we'll be in good faith?
Uh, this, the sub will keep me informed on what they're doing, so I can report to you what, what, what has been awarded to a minority sub and how much money, how much of this project went to a minority sub.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, the reason why I decided to do it, and Commissioner Fletcher mentioned something when I was talking about it a couple of weeks ago, at this, we can see the necessity is to have a minority procurement office somewhere that will be inclusive of minorities and women's and other groups. So, I think that as we get ready to wind down, we need to make sure that this is something we look at next year in the budget. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mayor Protem?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Nothing further.
Mr. Warburton?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Langstaff?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Young?
Uh, yes, sir. I'll just echo what Commissioner Howard just said, that we just need to do a better job at trying to identify those opportunities. And, and, you know, that's our responsibility as a city. I know also there was some part of this contract that was a fiber optic termination. I do know that there is a fiber optic, black-owned fiber optic company that's recently owned, so it may not be on the list, but they are available as well. So, we definitely want to do more to make sure we're finding those opportunities. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? Chris Howard?
No further discussion.
Mayor Protem?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Um, Ms. Fields, what is the, I mean, you had the curate.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the makeup of your staff?
Um, my staff is, actually, it's majority black. We have, I have eleven people and of those eleven, two of them are white. Everybody else is black.
So, and are any of them women other than you?
Yes, there are.
And so, you have African-American, Caucasian, you don't have any other? I mean, like?
No, that's it.
Okay, so maybe we need to, you know, work on that.
Work on some more diversity in my office.
Yeah, I can see that. Yeah, increase the women and increase the other and get a good, healthy balance.
We'll work on it, ma'am.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Warburton?
No, nothing further.
Commissioner Langstaff?
Nothing further.
Mr. Young?
Uh, nothing further.
I guess now call the question, Ms. Talbot.
What, one?
Yes.
What, two?
Mayor, I think we need to make a motion, don't we? I think we need to make a motion, don't we?
Um, oh, no, we didn't.
I'll offer the resolution.
We need a motion.
Okay.
I'll offer the resolution.
I'll offer the resolution and ask for its adoption for nine.
Second.
Motion of a second. We've already discussed it, and it's, okay, can we call the question?
Uh, what, one?
Yes.
What, two?
Yes.
What, three?
Yes.
What, four?
Yes.
What, five?
Yeah.
What, six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor votes yes. Ms. Fields, can I ask you to stick around, not to go home? I'm going to say something about you later on, and I want you to correct me if it's wrong. I'm wrong.
Okay.
If it's a compliment, it's wrong.
You said, "Don't go home."
Well, please. Okay, the next item of the consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Howard?
No further discussion.
Mayor Protem?
No discussion.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No discussion.
Ms. Warburton?
No discussion.
Mr. Langstaff?
No discussion.
Ms. Young?
No discussion.
We call the roll.
What, one?
Yes.
What, two?
Yes.
What, three?
Yes.
What, four?
Yes.
What, five?
Yeah.
What, six?
Uh, do we, I guess, do we even kind of read off what was on the consent agenda for the public? Or do, I mean...
I didn't. Two items on the consent agenda were, um, a proposal to buy a utility tractor for facilities maintenance, um, at a cost of $75,687. And, um, the other item was what's called a split award, a contract to buy, um, various, um, rock and concrete from three local vendors, Oxford, AAA Concrete, and Reeves Construction.
For the price?
Oh, I'm sorry. At a price not to exceed $79,887.50.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What, six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor votes yes. Now, under other business? Ms. Howard?
I got something for, I'm a bypass, thank you for the next one.
Okay. Um, Mayor Protem?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Nothing.
Ms. Warburton?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Mr. Carter, um, on our very first work session, we talked about the vacant property registration?
Yes.
And I, I don't think we were taking an official action on that, but did staff get what you needed to move forward, or do we need to kind of do a straw vote for Mr. Forghey to move forward? Because he's got to go get bids, the work details out, and then the whole package would come back to us, but...
Right, you're in the process of doing that now. That was just informational, let you guys know about it, and once we figure out all the details, we'll bring that back to you for approval.
Okay.
So, there's nothing required right now.
Okay, I was just making sure, because it wasn't on tonight's agenda, so, so it's something staff's going to second base on, if you will. The other thing, Mayor, I know you sent us an email about the county's requests for, uh, members on a reappropriation, redistricting committee. I guess I understood the request differently than the way you phrased the letter. Uh, I, I think it would be good for the city to have three members on that committee, realizing that whatever that committee does, it's still got to come back to this commission. So, that committee in and of itself is not making any decisions, they would just bring a recommendation. But I, I would just hate not to be at the table with the county and the school board as they talk about redistricting, uh, reappropriation. You know, there's even discussion about CD County consolidation, all that's, what I understand is being discussed in that group. Uh, I just believe that we really should have three people up, so there'd be, it'd be a nine-member group, from my understanding, three from the school, three from the county, three from the city was the intention. So, I was going to ask Mayor, I don't know if that's a future identity item or something we can decide here, but, um, I, I would ask that we not turn down the request to send three people, that we would send three people.
Okay.
To be a part of that group.
And I guess what we need to do, Ms. Warburton, is, um, confirm, maybe there was a misunderstanding, I asked the city attorney for an opinion, and, um, it was my understanding that this nine-person committee would make a recommendation as, for all three bodies, and it would be binding, okay? And of course, the city attorney said, basically, there you're abrogating your duty, your statutory duty to reapportion. Is that right, Ms. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if, if this...
Delegable matter.
If this committee is just going to make recommendations to go to the three taxing bodies, that's something totally different. And, you know, however you want to do it, if you want to find out more, but my understanding from talking to Chairman Cohelus was that the six-member body and the city, um, cooperated would be, would basically redraw the lines. So, if you want to find more about that, but...
Well, yeah, I can't speak for the other six, but I would say for our three, whoever the three, we'd have the understanding those three aren't making the decision for the seven, that our three would always report back to us about the city. I mean, if the school board moves their lines, or the county moves their lines, I mean, that's, but if there's anything with the city, that it would report back to this group. So, we, you know, we might have some time to talk about it again next, at the work session. I mean, if you want to follow the county.
Why don't we just put it, why don't we just put it on a future, the next agenda? Can we do that, Mr. Carter? And, and that, and that'll give us some time to find out from the county and the school board exactly what this committee's going to do. And if, if I was mistaken that they're only going to make recommendations, well, you know, I'll apologize.
Well, and it might have been their intention to do that.
Okay, well, I think it was, but...
We would send three people.
Yeah.
That we're not agreeing to that, we're sending three people, and we're going to involve all seven of us.
Well, let's don't talk about the merits now, but if, if they're going to bind, I mean, I don't know why we would cooperate if they're going to make decisions or why they would want us to cooperate, and we're not going to be bound by what their six folks said. I mean, I just, but, but we'll talk about that at, at length. We put on items, okay? Items, no, other business still. Commissioner Langstaff? Did you have something else, Commissioner Warburton? Okay, Ms. Langstaff?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Young?
No further business.
Uh, two items I have, um, I think we need to update on the Hotel Gordon. I was looking back, um, I thought they were going to be, um, under construction by this point, Mr. Carter. And then the other thing, Mr. Carter, I had asked if we could, if the commission could see the application that's going to be submitted to the, um, is it OPB? Yeah, could, could we see that? And, um, I do want to say, um, we need to send letters of appreciation to those counties. I mentioned that before, didn't I, Mr. Carter? And that been done?
Yeah, we've done.
Okay, but we're working on it, okay? Because I think that is going to help our, um, application. Now, items for future agenda?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Based on the, on the date of that application, we can't wait for another meeting to send it.
Oh, no, 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 I just, yeah, no, I just wanted to see what, you know, what the, the presentation, and we had it, you know, if y'all just want to email it to us, if it's eight pages or 100 pages, we can work through it on our own time. But, yeah, I mean, for, I mean, we've got it done, is the, the main thing. And I, and I thank staff for doing that, thank you, Mr. Carter. Items for future agenda? Ms. Howard?
Mr. Mayor, can, is the chief person up, up there? Is he down front, brother? And, Mr. Mayor, has he come down, which, uh, I need to ask him, can he, um...
He's moving like those senior citizens.
Okay. Well, he left about 35 minutes ago.
I'll be fifth in December.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Let me ask you a question. I have been inundated, even when I'm meditating and walking. Is there, can, at one of our next meeting, someone from the school board, the chief of whatever, is to come and give us a location where all those, um, red lights are located? Because, um, a lot of business folks have been calling me saying they've been getting tickets, things, and I said, "I have this nice idea," because I said, "I'm pretty sure you're locating a lot of school areas." And another question they wanted to know is that, um, uh, like a lot of them are not, don't have where those flashing lights, could they, um, we can request that since they're in the city limit, can they put some flashing lights? And I also talked with Mr. Ken Breleb, he said they cost anywhere from $8,000 to $10,000 or something.
First question, no, sir. Uh, we, the school system doesn't have any, they just gave us permission. That's a program that we run. And I'll brief everyone again about the program.
Okay.
Second thing, uh, when it comes to the flashing lights and signs, uh, one of the intents that I want to do with the money coming from this Red Street project is to upgrade it. Now, I will say this, these schools have been in these locations at least, I'm almost 50, they've been there 50 years. So, the, the intent of the goal is to get people to slow down. And I understand people are not happy about these citations, but I can tell you, I have seen people slow down in school zones, because if you remember those kids who were killed over on Mark Road?
Mark Road.
It was because of people just not really paying attention. Uh, if we can save more lives because people will slow down, then I think this is a good thing. However, we, we can come back and give the presentation on it, but I think when it comes to, uh, saving lives, this is something, saving lives and getting people to abide by what the law says? I think this, this is a force multiplier.
Okay.
But I, I'll come back and give the numbers and the data, uh, to the commission.
Like putting up flashes, you said?
Well, that, that part there, that's, that's, again, that's what I talked about. Because honestly, I don't have the control over where flashes are at. Uh, we do have signs in all the school zones. If it was my, if I was king for a day, uh, I would put up, uh, flashes in all schools. I would put up newer signs, and I would add cameras to every school zone, just to ensure that when kids coming and going from school, people going, coming from work, they do abide by the speed limit, and even during the course of the day. Yes, sir.
Okay, then. That's it, Mayor.
Could I tag someone before the chief? Okay. Well, I just want, it's on this topic right here. If I could.
Okay, we're going around the table, because I got something on the same pocket.
Are you finished, Ms. Howard?
I'm finished.
Mayor Protem, any questions for, um, the chief?
Uh, no questions for the chief.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Well, it, it is, um, slowing down immensely, and we do get tremendous phone calls, and I myself have paid a couple of tickets. But I'll tell you what's really concerning me, and I've talked with Mr. Carter and, and the chief, and it's getting worse, especially Whispering Pines. They're avoiding Whispering Pines now, really, a lot of it, because 20 miles an hour is ridiculously slow, and 30 miles at all times, but that's the speed, and people should respect that. The avenues, 12th Avenue is becoming very dangerous. I mean, very, they're not even, I promise you, I don't make this up, they're not even stopping at the stop signs. They are just like, they're coming off of, they're shooting straight across Nottingham, getting on 12th, and they're just, our avenues, we're getting, I don't, I don't know if anybody else is getting them, but I'm getting calls about the avenues, I'm getting pictures. Mr. Carter knows, because I'm forwarding it to them as hard as I can forward it to them, and I know you two are talks about doing some things, but it's like we've settled the school zones down a little bit, and we've just made 12th, Hugh Jamar, Edgar, all of them just very unsafe. And we're going to, and I don't know, I don't, chief, I don't think the chief has a magical answer, but, because I, I've thought about what you said, chief, when you, sometimes you do something that you think is right, and it ends up being the, the opposite effect. But that is, it is, it is just, I'm worried about, I'm worried about 12th Avenue, I'm worried about Hugh Jamar, because I've stood out there talking with them people, and when you got, when you got a car doing 60, 70 miles an hour, and somebody's walking out to their mailbox, we're going to, we just, whatever the answer is, I hope we can find it.
Well, it's the same issue with the speed bumps, you put them in, people revert traffic. So, any kind of measure we do, people will avoid that. I, I don't, now, I will say this, I'm not one to say we put, uh, speed tables all over the city, I think they do need to go in certain places, uh, but, uh, whatever other force multipliers we have, and, and honestly, uh, it goes back to something we've always talked about, is that, you know, we got folks who got bad driving habits here in Albany, Georgia. Where we can cite them, we will. If, if, uh, the areas, if we start to see that traffic is picking up around areas within school zones, okay, we'll get out there and write tickets. However, if you're a resident of that area and you get a ticket, let's pay it.
Yeah, well, you, and, and it was just brought to my attention today, and I think, I think, um, Mr. Carter said you were part of looking at this, the, uh, and tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Carter, the LED speed signs. I mean, would you explain, I, I got the email, but exactly, because I mean, I'm going to be out tomorrow, having, I mean, I've been on Whispering Pines for 72 hours, what? And I've sort of shared with them a little bit without making a commitment, but they're asking me questions, you know, where will they go? I mean, I've got people saying, I mean, I know, and that's what I've told them, I've told them that we're just in talks, but what, they're, they're asking me, what, what is the details of that? You know, because I do have enough sense to know that if it's something that would possibly work, you could get the public to push it, and it might happen a little faster.
Well, these are just speed limit signs that have a, a radar sensor in it, and it will display that, that speed as you're, as you're approaching that sign. Now, but we don't have the signs yet, so we, we haven't determined all the places we're going to try to put that. We're just in talks about, is that a good idea? And if it is, how can we deploy it?
And I'm going to tell you something I saw, I took a friend to Mayo this last week for surgery, and it was a, a problem neighborhood, we got talking to it, and it was amazing, very attractive signs that says, "Please drive this neighborhood like your children live here." And they said it took about three months for people to get the message, but it was a very pleasant neighborhood to be in, and, you know, and I'd even thought, I mean, I'm asking the people if we, if I personally created those signs, would you put one in your yard? Because the people in Jacksonville were saying it, it took a while, and it took people maybe going three doors down and saying, "I can't help but notice when you leave, you fly down." And, you know, I think that's, and that's the method I'm using, just, you know, I mean, I can send the chief a tag number, but, you know, when I catch him in front of his, in but, you know, when I catch him in front of his, in front of their, I mean, it's just getting dangerously and we got children, disability people, seniors, and it is just horrible over in them areas. So, thank you, thank y'all for looking into it.
Chris Warburton, any question for chief?
No question.
Mr. Langstaff, any question for the chief?
No question.
Mr. Young.
Uh, yes, sir, I just wanted to, and then kind of, I don't say disagree, but just a different comment from, from Commissioner Howard in terms of these tickets and lighting and all of that. We have had far too many deaths on our roads lately. Just a death in the last few days. And then the young man that was killed on ML King riding dirt bikes. We have a serious, serious traffic problem and people not obeying the, the traffic laws in this city. And I'm probably gonna say something that's gonna kind of get me in trouble with some of my folks. Please stop calling me about the, the camera tickets. You need to slow down. That's as simple as that. We, we drive too fast, people pass each other and on, on two-lane avenue streets going much too fast. And we just need to, as a community, recognize that we have speed laws for a reason and that's to stop people from getting hurt, stop people from getting killed. Chief, I hope we can do a little bit more, I don't know, PR in terms of making folks more aware of these things. So, you know, they, they can understand that we have this problem. I think, as has been said, it's just something is going on right now where people are just not obeying traffic, the traffic laws and we gotta, we gotta do something about it. I'm, I'm also worried, you know, in, in my, in my war for long streets like South Madison where, you know, we, we got probably, I think now, probably in, in, um, three, I want to say three, what do you call them? Murals or shrines to people who have died on, on residential streets. These are not highways like you see on seventy-five or a back, back road or something. These are residential streets where people have died and, and we, we got to do better as a city in terms of that. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One thing for the chief, Lee, chief.
You'll be fifty before you leave, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick point of view. Let the men in blue know that we will have almost seventy-five guests here. They are going, I was informed that Grandly State football team is going to spend the night here for the game, for homecoming. So let them know that this is a good life city.
Well, they need to pay homage to the Albany State Golden Rams while they're here in this city.
Thank you, chief. Items for future agenda, Mayor Protem.
Nothing further.
Items for future agenda?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Warburton.
Nothing further.
All right, we, we know we're gonna talk about the committee, okay. Commissioner Langstaff.
Nothing further.
Mr. Young.
Nothing further, but I want to congratulate the chief and the Doherty High Trojans for beating Monroe. I, 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 chief, I lived up to my bit that I was gonna shave my head if y'all won, so. I did. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. One thing, Ms. Fields, still here?
Yes, sir.
Well, the one thing, Commissioner Howard is talking about this minority procurement office, been talking about it for months. Come on up, Ms. Fields. If you would, if y'all remember, I wrote a letter to the school board and to the county commission and didn't get a response from anybody. I have talked to Ms. Fields a few times about what the office was, what the history of the office was. And this is something, Mr. Carter, we need to put on as an agenda item. It's something that's gonna take a lot of discussion because if we go forward with it, it's gonna be only the city. And at one point in time, it was ATI and the three entities. Apparently, they're, they're not interested in doing it. In, in response to Commissioner Fletcher's comments about the procurement office, Ms. Fields, and this is not the time to explain, but, I mean, in detail, she's explained to me before that her primary job is making sure we get the best qualified vendor at the lowest price. And there's gonna be some conflicts and somebody in MB, Minority Business Office is gonna be an advocate for disadvantaged businesses. And so there's an inherent conflict, is that fair to say, Ms. Fields?
It's fair to say, yes.
So this is just not a responsibility we can put on the procurement office because maximizing the participation of minority businesses is a totally separate responsibility. Would that be fair to say?
That would be fair to say.
So we can, what we need to do at some point in time, Mr. Carter, I would think early next year, that might not be satisfactory to Mr. Howard, but at least sometime, we're gonna get it on the agenda and start taking some action and understanding what the cost would be, what this office would accomplish, what the requirements are. I know that you have to do the DBE study and this kind of thing. Of course, you know, it might be a matter of, we'd have to have the disparity study before the minority business office could really have the data they needed. Yes, ma'am.
Let me point out that you don't necessarily have to do a disparity study to stand, to stand up this office.
Okay.
You can stay, you know, the only reason you would really need a disparity study is to institute goals.
Okay.
And if you don't institute goals, then you're not gonna need a disparity study.
Okay, well, that, that, this is something, in all fairness to Commissioner Howard, instead of just talking about it, I think we need to put it on the agenda and all have an understanding of what the cost would be, what the office would, what the office would hopefully accomplish. And there again, whether or not the county and school board are interested in, in participating.
That was gonna be my question, are you looking to do this alone or you want to reach out and...
Mr. Carter, that, for me, would be one reason, would be a, if you look at the pluses and minuses, that would be a minus, obviously. But, you know, if, if, we, we need to see, obviously, despite what some folks say, we, we all want to see African-American businesses empowered in a larger percentage of contracts awarded to minority businesses. I mean, that's just the truth.
We can, we can reach out to both of those other groups, see if they're interested.
Yes.
If they're interested, we'll give you a proposal with them involved. If they're not interested, we'll give you a proposal by ourselves.
That's good. And, and like I said, Mr. Carter, we need an understanding because I'm certainly not an authority on that. That's why I wanted Ms. Fields to stay here. But the, the main thing, we cannot expect the procurement office to, to do this job because the procurement office is trying to get us the, a qualified vendor at the lowest price. That's fair to say, isn't it?
That is fair to say.
Yeah.
I am also trying to make them, you know, minority vendors, but, you know, the two don't always match up.
Well, just thank you for what you do and thank you for sticking around. It's not too late. Well, with that, no other business, we'll stand adjourned.